Thursday, February 13th, 2014. Oh, she's 20. Number 8? What's that?
20.
I didn't know if North Bramford was Trump high, that's my problem. February 20th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Chairman Pat Anaster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Here.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Here.
Ed Cordino?
Here.
Philip Downmire?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Purnier?
Here.
Uh, salute to the flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again. Uh, visitors, any visitors comments? The minutes of the agenda, please. Are you waving or are you laughing? No? Student reps?
Hello.
Hello.
So currently, the sophomore class is completing the final steps of preparation for the science section of the CAP test, which is scheduled for March 21st. Along with the new SBAC testing for grade 11 students, grade 11 students, which is scheduled for April, the SD, CSDE has decided that sophomores will be to complete the science portion of the CAP. And also during this next month of February, students and staff at the high school will be preparing to host the Anti-Defamation Leaks, Leaks Can Hurt Us program, which will focus on diversity and different strategies that can reduce bullying behaviors. There will be two days of training for the students, and I believe one of those days was actually, yeah, a few weeks ago. And two, and staffing, for staffing students, and the event will be school-wide and held on March 14th.
A total of 53 students and adults traveled to Quebec, Canada, as part of the, uh, high, uh, the French program at the high school. And they arrived the night of February 7th, and they returned on the 9th. While they were there, they got to go to Montgomery Falls, and they went dog sledding, and they also went to an authentic 17th century restaurant, one of those fun activities. Um, seniors at the high school, Alyssa Doran and Cassie Norton, were named by the National Field Hockey Coaches Association to be included in the national academic program, which is pretty impressive because they needed a 3.5 GPA or higher along with, um, performing well in the sport. And during the next three months at the high school, uh, some students would be exchanging letters with second-grade pen pals from Montgomery School in Bramford, and sometime in the spring, the second graders are scheduled to come to the high school in either.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on the trip to, uh, Quebec, Quebec. Mr. Stefler, chaperone, I think, probably took 2,000 to 3,000 pictures, and I'm sure he'd love to sit and share that. But, um, one of the chaperones, uh, who's the secretary of the high school, she said that, uh, she's been on several occasions, and this was probably, in her estimation, the best group, uh, that has traveled, uh, in her experiences. And I shared that with Mr. Stefler, and he said the students were absolutely extraordinary in how polite and caring and respectful they were, and what, um, great representatives they were of North Bramford High School and the community. So I want to thank Mr. Stefler for taking time away from his family to volunteer to go on that trip. Uh, the other chaperones, and I want to publicly thank our students, uh, for representing our town with such grace and dignity, dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to stay, you can stay. If you want to go home and get ready for those captain exams and the S VAC and... Go right ahead. Thank you for coming out where you're going.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, approval of previous minutes? January 16th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 16th, 2014 budget regulation minutes, meeting minutes, House of Representatives.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Pat Anaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
abstain.
Ed Cordino?
abstain.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Uh, January 23rd meetings.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2014 budget workshop as submitted.
I'll second it. Second from Dave. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Pat Anaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
abstain.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Personnel.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Lisa Dahnheim, guidance counselor at North Bramford High School, effective February, Friday, February 14th, 2014.
Oh.
Uh, second.
The superintendent's received the resignation, uh, from Ms. Lisa Dahnheim, guidance counselor at North Bramford High School, effective February 14th, 2014. Ms. Dahnheim has been employed by North Bramford Public School for past 10 years. Sorry to see you go.
I made the initial motion, and I second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Pat Anaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Just, uh, to mention on that note of the resignation, Ms. Dahnheim, I'd like to publicly thank her for her 10 years of committing to our district. We're certainly going to miss her. The tenant of plan right now is a part-time person that is, uh, applying for that full-time position, so she's in house, she'll shift over, uh, to assume the role of the full-time counselor and of the, um, the students that Ms. Dahnheim was working with, she'll now take control of the work. And a partial, uh, position will be, um, put out when we start the new room for that position as well, in the very near future, and it's been posted by Mr. Stefler.
Appointments, none at this time? Leaves, none at this time? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's an honor and a, and a privilege to have Mr. Carpenter here, uh, this evening, and, yeah, he's here. Respect him. He's with his fan club, actually. And, uh, I'm going to have Dr. Lindsay come up, because this has really been a TVES project and program, and I don't want to do a disservice to it. And we have a rep here from Jump Rope for the Heart, and, uh, and I want, certainly want to be...
This is Jay Crowthers from the American Heart Association.
Uh, if I'm here, it was fine. If you just want to share, over six years, something out here's been greater than $70,000 raised, and this past year, $17,000 were raised by our students. So just why, why do we do it, how supportive of our curriculum?
Sure.
And, uh, and our relationship that's formed so well?
Well, I have to tell you, I, when I first began as a principal in my very first confused days, um, Jay came to see me from the American Heart Association and talked to me about whether we might like to do Jump Rope for Heart. This was something I did in junior high school, and loved, and felt like it would be an incredible opportunity for the TVES students. Not long after, the gym teacher resigned, that was the first Dave's School, and I thought, what am I, what am I going to do? Um, so actually, um, we had the good fortune, Dr. Welch and I interviewed Dave Carpenter, and we found not only was he an amazing asset to our physical education program, but he was just the perfect person to facilitate Jump Rope for Heart. Uh, he teaches our kids all about cardiac care, all about health and wellness. The kids get up and moving, he plays music in the background, they jump rope. It's very funny to see them all take turns going through the really big jump rope and try to beat the records of the other classes he posted on the board. Uh, the energy is really contagious. And after, I think it was after the first year, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, we started a whole health and wellness expo to really highlight all different kinds of, um, important issues in health and wellness and to get our kids excited. We don't have the opportunity to deliver a full health curriculum in our school day, so this was our way of teaching kids in a hands-on, meaningful, um, kind of way, and they love it, we love it, it's fantastic. And I'm just so glad to be able to publicly congratulate Mr. Carpenter for all of his hard work, um, over the last years, and for giving us an amazing experience. So thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, um, on behalf of the American Heart Association, I want to thank you and Dr. Lindsay. When I, I've been doing this for 10 years, and when I finally met you two six years ago, it was like this dynamic duo. Over the past six years, um, you have raised $59,600 for the American Heart Association because of your enthusiasm and your, he shaves his head and challenges the kids, uh, but he makes it really, really fun. He uses the curriculum that we give them to share with the kids. Um, but it wouldn't happen without your enthusiasm and the support of your, your faculty and your administration. Um, we like to say that $50 saves a life because that's the cost to train someone in CPR, and if people are trained, we can save more lives. So that comes out to about 1,192 people, lives that have been saved by the community and at the leadership of Dave Carpenter. We hope there's many more to come.
We have a certificate of appreciation, it's not as fancy as the American Heart Association, but it's issued to David Carpenter, recognition of your outstanding achievement of raising funds and awareness on behalf of the American Heart Association. So David, congratulations. Thank you for your continued support of this, your willingness to get down, he was duct taped this year, completely to the chair, so he's, so he's strange, he shaved his head. Well, it was red.
Red.
My hair was red for him. I thought I shaved it.
And you wore a tie and jacket for...
Last year, tie and jacket.
We wrapped him in toilet paper, we shaved his head, it's really the window end.
And he is tending, so. So thank you so much.
Thank you, TVES, for your acceptance. Oh, sure.
Hold the spot, Josh?
Yep.
And Mr. Carpenter is already my boss coach as well, so we're honored to have him. Thank you for being here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board groups are attached under exit at C. Uh, I'm sure many of you have had a chance to go through and acknowledge some of the activities that have been going on in the district. If there's any question, questions, administrative team is here to answer them at this time. We spoke about the trip and some of the activities, the fundraisers and awarenesses, uh, that have gone on, though, because it's spectacular around the web, it's amazing how we're able to put it together. Uh, we also under, uh, communications, field trips, the high school and the little language department traveled through New York City on May 1st, and then will visit Ellis Island and the time museum, and hopefully to further understand the study of immigration, so it's a wonderful trip. Uh, we do not require the board to approve it, as it is not in full enrollment state. It's a trip that's been taken many times with a success, so we always hope that our students will thank God. Kindergarten enrollment, the registration was held on the 6th of February at Jerome Harrison. Uh, it was a little different process this year, they're spending more time with getting to know the students and assessing so that when they place our little guys next year, uh, they're able to balance the classroom based upon needs. At this time, and I know this number is wrong, Mr. Mancini, we have 109 registered, but we think that number is rising.
Right now, we have the 109, and I think we have about 10 or 12 in the wings, but it's still early because we picked up an awful lot of students in the month of August last year.
Right, so we're estimating this year about 133 to be right around there. But 10 or 12, outstanding, add to the 109, better definite, so you're over 120 over the summer months coming, so we're estimating that would be in that 130 range.
Scott, is this number higher than typical, typically in the past, because I don't remember it being as high in February last year?
This early?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a good question.
I think, uh, in my discussion with Marilyn, the secretary, uh, earlier, a couple of weeks ago, she indicated that it was a high number for this period of time to happen.
And we do have seven sections, uh, to cover with the enrollment number, so we, we think we, we'll be able to, yeah, with 130, 135. Okay? The budget request, we've had a series of meetings, honesty workshops, you are there of the number that I presented in my, um, 2014, 15 request, and it's now the opportunity to ask any questions or discussions before accepting the number that you'll hold on the seat. So at this time, is there anything that you'd like to ask of the student committee or any administrators before we set a number moving forward to next year? I, I do want to, before you do set that number, thank the administrative team, and obviously the board, the heart of it, uh, in building a budget that's responsible and represents our strategic plan, uh, that is our backdrop that, you know, we, we want to look to when we make decisions, when we talk about school facilities, safe schools, and teaching and learning is our highest priority. Our budget should represent our belief system and, and should represent our dedication and commitment to every student in the district of the 2,000 students that we service each and every day, both in the district and out of the district. So I want to commend you and thank you for your efforts in keeping children in mind in that forefront of your decision-making.
I have a question, board. Well, we talked about American Budget Subcommittee, and this figure at the top of the page, that's assuming we're getting the special ed cost grant back.
That is correct.
What's the number if we don't?
Well, it's 268,000. I believe it was 4.9...
9,000.
9, oh, dollar amount?
260.
30 million, 200, 300, 300, 32, 362.
Any questions for the super?
I have a question, Ms. Stefler. How many seniors do you have in school?
Um, right now, I believe we're at 605.
Approximately. How many seniors do you have?
Uh, 170.
Thank you. Um, what do you guys, how, how do you feel, should we request a budget assuming we're getting special ed cost grant, or do we...
So here's my concern, we are going to assume, if we, if we go with this amount, we're assuming we're getting the cost grant?
Correct.
We're assuming the teacher's contract stands as is.
Stands as is.
We're assuming a lot.
Unfortunately.
I, I know, but...
Yeah.
We're assuming a lot, and I think, well, you know, if we, right, if we had the number for the teachers' grant, I would almost be okay with sort of gambling, not really gambling, but with the...
Is what does it work for a number?
Right. Um, I think 2, that, that could be going, yeah.
So are you saying adding the special ed grant?
I'm saying adding the special ed grant, and then some.
And then some, you're sure the arbitration is being avoided, or we're negotiating. And historically, it has been, and I think it will again.
Well, your legal costs are low.
Yeah, exactly.
The legal people come out of this year.
We are responsible, the legal people, out of the current budget.
Well, right now, right now, we include the special ed, we're at 30,932,362.
Which I want to say was something like 4.9 something.
4.9, sorry.
Or something like that, right?
Now, if you guys want to include the cost of arbitration...
Well, I don't, I don't think he's looking at the cost of arbitration, the possibility that they...
Right, of the contractual obligation.
Yeah, I, I imagine that.
But how do we make it a...
There's no way over here, there's no way that he can throw a ballpark out there.
That's the biggest moving target out there.
Tom, traditionally, with any contract, I've got to arbitration. In your experience, what is the over, usually, come out best? Is the, the overage as to what we initially go with, the cost would be for the contract if approved as presented, if it goes to arbitration, is it, you know, a 2% difference, 5% difference?
This, this is the first time that I'm aware of, that the arbitration has been the result of rejection by the town council. We have gone to arbitration before, but it was because of an unsuccessful mediation through lack of evidence, but, um, so I, I don't know what would typically happen if you have an agreement such as this that goes to, to arbitration.
So as fellow board members, are you comfortable with the 30, 932, 362?
No.
Or, or do you think we need to, to, I mean...
I guess my, my question would be, if we don't account for some sort of difference in the teacher contract, what, what happens?
Yeah, we're all afterwards, when we've got the number that we need to...
We'd have to make it up.
In more, in more, in more positions.
Correct.
With a layoff, another official layoff or something like that.
You'd have to come on a different line somewhere.
Because typically, what if, typically, in the past few years, just few years, what if we ended up with at the end of the June 30th this year, would we end up with 50,000, 60,000?
It's 50, 100,000, 50,000.
So if we were to add something, and I don't know what I'm, I'm making up, just yet, but if we were to add something, and something happened, and the contract stood or came back in our favor anyway, how would we go about adjusting that?
Well, assuming it comes back in time, and that's the issue, and that's something we talked about in the Budget Subcommittee, that, you know, the timeframe for the town to finalize a budget is around mid-April, which is also around the time that the arbitrator's award would, would come out.
So we could adjust it out?
We could attempt to at that, but we could certainly, if we put money in, we could certainly take it back out. Um, if we didn't put any money in, you could always ask for more recovery cost at that point in time.
So...
See, isn't that being reactive?
You know, that's, well, probably proactive, of course, is, you know, I really, it's hard to say what, what the worst-case scenario is. And particularly, and I don't, I don't want to get into a lot of discussion now about, you know, negotiation strategy or, or those kinds of things, so, um, you know, that's what makes this whole conversation even more difficult. Okay, I'm just making this up, so hypothetically, we throw in a quarter of a million dollars, hypothetically, based on what we just discussed, if we find out that, like Deb says, that we, we can pull that quarter of a million off the table, we need to date, or use part of it to offset what the arbitration would be back at then, right? Yeah, I mean, I would, I would think, I wouldn't see additional...
I'm just trying to make that number up.
I would, yeah, but I, and I was just going to say, I wouldn't see additional cost of anywhere near a quarter of a million dollars. I mean, the, the proposed settlement for year one, um, was about 320,000. Um, so, and that was a step movement, um, and ended up being a 2.78% increase. So it's about 1,000, 1%. Okay. So I mean...
Yeah, 308 for the 300,000.
To, to expect that they, I mean, to expect that that number would change drastically...
See, I, I, I guess, if you were to put a contract, so it would have been 78,000 for the year.
Right.
So maybe if we go with a nice round of 31?
Yeah, I, it, it, at worst, we'll probably go to 3%, that's what I mean. I mean, yeah, that's a, again, you know, we're sort of guessing, but... Which is kind of in line with other positive arbitrage before, is that correct? Well, as I said, I, I'm not, honestly, I don't know of any other ones that have gone this path. I'm sure there are, um, but I just don't have any information about it at this point in time.
I have, I have a question, uh, I missed that budget meeting, so, um, let's say we get zero again, and I'm only saying this because the past two budget cycles, we've got zero, how many teachers do we have to lay off as a result of this?
Well, zero would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 16 or 17 teachers. Plus the other, I mean, one of the things we talked about earlier is, we did talk about a little bit of restructuring in some of the requests, um, one less teacher, um, at Totucket Valley, some changes in the high school guidance department, which resulted in some savings. Um, there is some savings that we're already aware of on the dental side, that's about $29,000. There is some more potentially on the medical side, but I won't know that in time. I mean, we met with our insurance guy today, so, you know, that's, the information we have is what we have. So, you know, there are some things that would happen first before we would start involuntarily eliminating teachers. For every four teachers that you lay off, you have to add a fifth to cover the unemployment. It's about 13,000 for unemployment, so if you're looking at the average, 22,000 dollar teacher salary for our, you know, our newest hires, and depending upon how far we walk the ladder, for every four, you have to add, add a fifth teacher to, to cover the unemployment cost.
Now, um, well, let's do the classroom size, I mean...
Well, programs, classroom size.
You lose programs.
Yeah, you'll lose, you'll lose programs.
I'm more interested in keeping programs and increasing classroom size, I don't...
With a number like that, it's going to be...
Some of the teachers is the majority of Jerome Harrison.
Your numbers are...
There are elementary classrooms, and one, but then if you lose programs at the high school, that's less options for the kids, and those numbers in the classrooms for the existing, remaining classes will also go on before they question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve an operating budget request of 30,932,000 for school year 2014, 2015.
I'll second.
Discussion?
You said 30,000, what, 932?
30,932,000.
Any discussion, guys? Roll, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, it's okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Just going to say I'm not comfortable with that, that question for arbitration. So go ahead.
Well, I think, again, I think you do have some cushion based on some of the other things that we could do, and as I said, even, I mean, there's a $29,000 savings in the dental insurance, um, that would provide some cushion for the arbitration, and that's known, that's without making any other staff charges. And then we have, actually, have picked up some, um, that did not a lot of money, but maybe $20,000 in the, uh, you know, in the changeover in guidance staffing, so there's, again, there are, there are a couple of things in there that will, that will be, would be able to be reduced without any additional burden.
So you're comfortable with that? I mean, with this number? To the best of our ability?
Well, and, and again, so the other issue with this number is if you were to be, if we were to be given the special ed excess cost grant... we were to be given the special ed excess cost grant, then we could remove that from the request.
Because we'll know about that by...
Well, that's, that's a council decision.
Yeah, okay, okay, sorry.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, we all set? Marson, any further discussion?
Yeah, no, no. Well, I have one, I'm sorry, we're already at this, are we? So the breakdown by the different percentages, so we have the four point for the general, what we want to present, and then what we need to be cut for it to go to 3.11%. Anything below that are we contemplating activity, because I see it in here again?
I left it in there because, when we said take it out.
Okay, okay.
Ready to vote a motion, are we all set? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Go with your heart.
No.
39, 32.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve a capital budget request of $698,000 for the school year 2014, 2015. That is the list we got, folks, with $40,000 in security upgrades, because if the second round of grants comes through, we might be able to do something with that, add some rooftop units at the school. But with, with Clarif, just in case anybody doesn't realize, the town council has item by item veto on this. They can pick and choose on this, what they fund and what they don't fund.
So we have bathroom renovations for 118,000, food service renovations with asbestos abatement for 112,000. We play, replace main gym heaters with hot water AC combination, this is a very soft number of $100,000. Science room with asbestos abatement for 88,000. Track resurfacing, assuming that we need about $6,000 for repairs for 65,000, which gives us a Northland High School total of 48,400.
Then you have the rooftop units also for 60,000.
Plus 6,000.
Raises that to 540,000.
And then the other two, the auditorium and the dorm.
And then, yeah, we've been kicking your can down the road again, the auditorium was supposed to be, had the brick waterproofed several years ago for $48,000, and then Jerome Harrison for an aisle replacement for $67,000.
Can we have a waterlooing party, we get a bunch of volunteers that waterproof it?
Yeah.
Would that go against all insurance?
And then you have the district security for 40,000.
Right.
All right, I just want to, I want to go on record today.
I do.
Looking at the 600-plus thousand dollars for capital projects, I would take all of them off the board to retain our teachers and keep our class sizes conducive to teaching and learning and to keep this district moving forward, I would eliminate everything on this list.
I'm in the back, you have on that.
Yeah, great. Please, well, how are you doing?
Okay, Marson made the motion, Deb seconded. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, last thing for, for my part, the North Ramford Ed Foundation's signing star award dinner, I know many of you attended it in the past, it's a fun evening, the day is Thursday, March 13th at Woodlands located in Branford. We will be recognizing Bruno Castaldi, Richard Estegnion, and Anna May Doody, three wonderful representatives of this great community that have given so much back to our, our children and adults, so if you aren't available on that evening, we'd love to see you there that night. The Ed Foundation is a 501(c)(3) that supports opportunities for our teachers to do enrichment in the classroom, they've funded many worthwhile things, and again, if you are free that night and you are able to come out, I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, negotiations?
Any motion, any...
This is the second session.
Yes.
Okay. Budget and operations.
Pretty good job with that.
You did a pretty good job doing it, and I didn't.
You know what I'd like to say about operations? I'd like to thank our historians and public works for doing a phenomenal job of snow and ice removal to the best of their ability. Our parking lots and sidewalks, they kept them clean and, you know, they had a tough winter with 19 snowy events this year.
And it's, and more...
They work on the...
Let's keep the fingers crossed, but, you know, we're into...
Big one for Wednesday.
We're into a situation where there's, there's no snow on the ground, and it warms up into the 40s and then drops into the 20s at night. We're going to have ice every morning for the next four to five weeks, and I speak daily with Fran and Marola between 5:00 and 5:30, and he lets me know when they're on the road and they're out in trucks, and Bill Choy getting the schools ready. So I'm going on their recommendations early on to see if we're gonna have a delay or not due to the icing.
How, how are the roofs holding out?
Roofs are, are holding up fine. Bill Choy, Bill Choy has been on all of the roofs except for the auditorium because of the pitch. He encouraged him and Jerome to go up there, but he worked with the roofing company last year and has a quick method for assessing the weight capacity, and if the, if the condensed snow is a, a risk to our schools, you know, we would first start by closing our, our center of lives and our gymnasiums and looking for visible signs of, of problems, but we're, we're okay right now. We certainly, that's, you know, on the front arm.
Yeah, just with the mountain freezing off.
Absolutely. We, we are having a lot of water in the buildings, in every building. I'm not gonna put the administrators on the spot, because you know I don't like to do that, but administrators, you're on the spot. I've been in every building, and the water, and the, and the barrels in the hallway, and the teachers teaching with the drip, the drip, the drip coming down, and some of the colors of the water that's coming down, obviously from what's in the roof. We're, we're in tough shape in all buildings.
Yes.
Heads are nodding?
Yes.
I'm assuming that's good. Yes, Mr. Manchin is in good shape. For the record, Jerome Harrison is in good shape.
We're leaking enough for both schools.
Yes.
You're both hopeful.
I, I, I...
You're exceeding expectations. This is made of CDOJ on that one.
Do you know how you do where jeepers are?
We actually had to move a staff member out of her office space at TBS and move her into a conference room, because the amount of water coming down and, and the electronic, we had the smart board, we'd have to move her laptop, and it's Dominic, he's old office, so he was fine, and he never, but...
It was okay when I...
It was okay when he was there. It's not suitable for, for anyone other than Dominic. So we're on that, and I'll continue to inform you of what are the issues.
While on budget and operations, it kind of doesn't fall under the budget and operations, but with the snow days and whatnot, because calendar is not on here, with the snow days and everything, now we're scheduled to have our last day of school, the 23rd, correct? I just wanted to...
As of today, as of today.
With, with five days left to play, up until about 30 at the beginning.
Do you have the...
Five more, not one.
I still say they should be wrapping, they should do some sort of...
And not at 5:00.
Lady Springsteen.
Curriculum instruction, the strategic planning.
We discussed today what we're going to be speaking about, parent information sessions, and really the need to delineate the difference between the teacher evaluation program, the smart balance assessment corporation, sorry, and the common core standards. So we, we had a discussion about what we think the parents really need to know, we had some inputs from some parents in the district, and we're moving forward with those nights, that would be February 26th and March 6th.
So again, that's February 26th and the 6th of March at the high school in the library. If, and I say this, if we have such a strong turnout that we have to go to the auditorium and have the auditorium set up, in my experience here over the last five years, I haven't seen it, a group come out that would force us to leave, you know, one side and go to another. It's an informational evening, the administrative meeting there with Ms. Woodin to discuss the mandates of, of common core and, and, you know, reform issues and evaluation, and what we're doing as a district to deal with this, how we model our evaluation plan around the state recommended model, our testing digs, and how we are assessing when we're going to get ready. So if you are available, please come out to, to support us.
And will there be snow days?
I thought you were gonna say refreshments, I'm gonna say...
Will there be refreshments?
There'll be refreshments? And do we have a snow day, Ms. Woodin?
We did not plan for a snow day, but we could definitely do that.
So, yes?
They're at 6 o'clock in the high school library. That conflicts with TVE, SPTO, just so you know, Dr. Lindt.
We, we know, there's no, we looked at calendars and...
Well, there's two nights to choose from, right?
Totally, and, and if we get snow out again, and we know that there's the Spectrum concert, and we know that there's youth basketball and whatnot, because we're getting, you know, feedback, and there's no perfect night to do this, and, and we're, we really offered two nights because of that. So if we get snow out, we'll pick another night, but right now, we're, we're setting stone on those two evenings to try to offset other, other conflicts.
Sure.
It's so tough this time of year.
Pension.
Pension committee did meet. There were, there were a couple of approvals, but nothing that was directly related to the board in terms of approving an individual's pension. There was some discussion about changing the mix of the portfolio, but it wasn't done yet. The, the recommendation was to move from 20% to 10% in real estate trusts, move from 40% to 30% in the large cap federated investors funds, and then to add a mid-cap growth fund at 20%. And one of the, there was a request made of the investment advisor who's from Morgan Stanley to provide a risk assessment of what the portfolio would look like in its, what it is in its current condition, and what it would look like in terms of risk if these changes were made. And so as a result of that, there was no action taken on changing the investment mix.
Thank you, Don. Policy?
We kind of had a meeting, but not really. We kind of, it was a phone conference quick about what we needed to move forward for requirements, and with Exhibit D, the policy committee provides a brief report regarding policy agreement forth for its first reading and second reading approval. Basically, the policy, policy subcommittee presents the following policy for its first reading, P 4070, school visitors at Exhibit D, and then Policy P 1215, high school graduation requirements Exhibit A. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy P 1215, high school graduation requirements as submitted.
One second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes. Dave, can I stop you for one second?
Absolutely.
So P 4070 is for first read?
Correct. We were looking at school visitors, to be consistent, it's a, it's a policy that we have acted on recently, but now with documentation of identification being collected, we wanted to have a language specific to the administrators having the flexibility to either collect ID or not, and, and just had our attorney look at that to make sure if there was a person that refused to give an identification on whatever grounds they chose, that we would have a policy in place to back up our decision not to allow them on grants or in our own facility. The current policy actually says that the visitors stop in at the principal's office, which of course is no longer really, so it's also... This, this updates it to the security desk and allows for security protocol established by building administration, because it may be somewhat different at Jerome than it is at the high school.
And then our next, Policy P 2150, evaluation termination and non-re违 athletic coaches, Exhibit G, and the motion is to approve Policy P 2150, evaluation termination and non-re违 athletic coaches as submitted.
One second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
Next is Policy P 9071, committees, Exhibit H, the motion is to approve Policy P 9071, committees as submitted.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
Next is Policy P 9230, suspension of policies, bylaws, and/or administrative regulations, Exhibit I, the motion is to approve Policy P 9230, suspension of policies, bylaws, or administrative regulations as submitted.
I'll second that. Any discussion, please? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
We'll move on to ACs.
Um, there's no update from me. Um, the meeting was rescheduled because of snow, I couldn't make a rescheduled date, so next thing's tomorrow.
Thank you. Phil, you ready?
Phil? I missed the last meeting.
Yes, he did, huh, Phil?
No, I was here.
No, not here.
Most of the time. No, I know I wrote it for you. Okay, thank you.
That's concise and quick, I like that. Communication.
I don't know if that's communication, but I'd like to say something, or just bring something up.
I do, I do have a, is there a report from the communication committee? I don't want to cut Mr. Nofo.
Go ahead.
Is, is there anyone who can report on communication?
What, it's a report from the, you guys that were there?
Yeah, we had one. There was discussion about the, I guess I'm giving a report. I was at the meeting. And there was discussion about rooftop units at the high school, and the permanent project committee was questioning whether the board bed was going to complete purchasing of those units, and we decided that that's a capital project, and that would be moved to the, to the town site for a capital project. And there was also a request that Monday night of additional budget books by the town council that I hand-delivered that next morning on Tuesday to the town council chambers, to the town manager's office. That was also a request from a council member that was there, and, and I satisfied that requirement that very next day.
Any else in communication, Daniel?
I don't...
Right, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay. Previously, I've been on the communication committee, and after a couple meetings, I brought up the subject of possibly folding up that committee. And the board decided to table it, and I was in agreement until the new members took seats and, you know, we were reappointed to, or took our new places on our new committees. I was just wondering how it's going, because I left that committee not having a good feeling, and that's only my opinion.
Sure.
But I was just wondering if where the board stands on that specific committee.
Well, my personal experience has been, I was elected in November and just sat in our first...
Which has been a first one.
...the holidays and the calendar they had scheduled, so the first meeting that I've attended, they've had, was last Monday.
Marson's been a little long on that one.
Yeah, so you guys can give your opinion.
Any more, any more meetings?
This is my... I have other meetings. I think that in order for it to be successful, we need to know what we're coming to the table to speak about, so there are agenda items, but there are a lot of agenda items that hold our new business, so if we were able to, and, and the same, I, I would, I would ask the town council questions without letting them come prepared with the answers, so am I... So in my own personal opinion, I think more things need to be on the agenda rather than under new business. But that's, again, I'm just basing this off of one meeting. So if this is a common theme, then maybe that can be brought up, but.
You know, everybody puts in a lot of time, more so a lot of the other members, even myself, on these other committees. And that's why I just wanted to bring it up again to see what the feel was. That was all.
I'll, I'll support that. I think that, you know, nobody minds answering a question, but we need to be prepared with it. And again, being new on that committee as well.
Yeah, so we'll bring it up again.
Thank you. New business. Any new business? Goodness board.
Your favorite topic.
Of course, you know I have something to say.
Hey, it's warmer than 30 degrees outside.
All right.
Always got a break.
I wanna make sure I stay on track or something. When I get done, before I say what I have to say, listen to everything and join your group when I have to say. The last two days since the last town council meeting has been very interesting, to say the least. I've learned a lot and I think we are gonna grow from what I learned, to be honest with you. So I wrote something up. I watched it on TV. I've heard from people that saw it, that listened to it. And there was a town council member that suggested I step down from the board of ed for comments I made at the last meeting about the tide. All right? They wanted to have, the lawyer sent me a letter saying that, you know, cease and desist, open your mouth, basically, I guess. And when I heard that, I take a pair of serpents. And I did reach out to, once I heard it, I reached out to Scott. I came to Scott's office that day and I said, Scott, I would never do anything to hurt this town or hurt the board of ed. And Scott and I had a discussion and I was willing to resign because I only paid the money for these people. And after that, I said, let me see other people at the board of ed meeting that heard. To be honest with you, I called Phil Donald, who I don't know that well, but I trust Phil's judgment. Phil's been in town for a while. And I spoke to Phil and I said, Phil, you know, be honest with me. You know, was I outlined, did I say something wrong? Did I put the town at risk? You know, what did I say? And Phil reassured me that I was set. I even reached out to Mr. Davis to get, you know, a point of view out there. And Mr. Davis reassured me that I didn't say anything that put the town at risk for this board. So I thought about it for a while and instead of, I wrote something actually, so I don't rattle on. But it was part of my intention that at Tuesday night's town council meeting, comments were made by council members about a statement I made at the last Board of Education meeting on February 6th, 2014. This statement was about the auditorium floor and how it was a trip hazard for students, staff, and community and the potential liability should someone fall. As an elected official to the Board of Education, I feel it's my responsibility to ensure the safety of our students, staff, and community members who visit our school and facilities on a daily basis. If I become aware of potential hazard in any of our buildings or facilities, I feel it is my responsibility to acknowledge and press action. Failure to do so would make me negligent in my duties. I am disappointed with the council comments about their interpretation of what was said. And once again, it seems a lack of cooperation is directed at not helping but hurting the common cause of making our town better. Having lived in this town for over 25 years and having three children graduate from North Brantford Schools, I take my position on this board of ed and chairperson very seriously and will continue to advocate for the betterment, not only of the education systems, but as a whole in this town. Again, you know, basically what it was perceived that was I encouraged town people to go out and trip and fall and sue the town. That's what basically was said. I mean, I spoke to Ed tonight. Ed heard in the diner that I told people go into town, you know, building and fall. I said we were, what I noticed. I said that we were open for lawsuits based on us being unnoticed and I stand by that. So, and to be honest with you, anybody that knows me, I called a few people to straight, to straighten it out. I spoke to Al Rose. Al Rose was the one that said it, to be honest with you. And Al, I have highest respect for Al Rose. I think he is a duplicate of me almost, that we say our piece and we are honest with each other. And Al and I had it very heart to heart. And he said, Lou, you know, I've known you for years and he thanked me for, you know, we had a nice discussion. And he thanked me for reaching out to him and clarifying everything that was said. And I didn't deny anything I said, to be honest with you. I said, listen, if it takes me being the squeaky wheel to get things done in this town, I'll be the squeaky wheel. Because, to be honest with you, last I checked, don't get rid of me but the townspeople unless I resign. As elected official, the best thing is, don't vote for me in two years if I decide to run. But Al and I had a very good conversation and he reassured me that not necessarily what he ran with was necessarily what was, you know, was told. And he is gonna speak at the next town council meeting. I did speak with the mayor. I spoke with Mike Paulus. I spoke with people that I could and I wanna thank everyone that came back to me and reached out back to me for the fact that, again, it was, if it was perceived wrong, if I did say something wrong, I'm the first one to step down. Hands down, don't worry about it. But it's very disheartening for, for me. Every time I say something up here, it seems like for the good of the board, the next board meeting, I have to clarify what I'm saying, no matter what it is. I think I'm three for three. And you wonder why people don't wanna run for the, for town council, the board of ed. I mean, this is a perfect example, to be honest with you, is that you get called on for carpet for something you say that you believe in and do, and yet you get called on the carpet. And by the way, after I got crucified basically for saying that I should step down, I should apologize to the town, in the next motion was to correct the tide. It was to send it to permanent projects. And Al actually thanked me for bringing it to their attention so they could rectify it. So if the town wants me to apologize, you're in again. I tell you right now, because I thought we did what we should have did. And now they're looking into it. It's in a permanent projects committee and it's getting looked into. So if you don't like what I say, like I said a couple of meetings ago, don't come. Don't listen. Turn the volume on your TV because you're gonna get what you get from me, honest truth. And, and that's all I have to say.
That was a lot longer than.
I know. Guidance. They gave me guidance.
When they say a picture is worth a thousand words, I think you achieved all three thousand words.
But, but again. But I know, but again, I think a lot of positives did come out of it.
Absolutely.
Because of the fact that Anthony, Anthony Cantelore, Mayor Cantelore, I've had conversations. Al, Al Rose and I have had very good conversations. And we see where we might be, the board of ed and the town council, where we need to start getting together and speaking honestly, or maybe not honestly, honestly, openly and find out what the true stories are before we sit up here and start talking about people. And again, I'm a firm believer, we need to do what we do to make this town better.
Isn't that the idea behind the communication committee?
I, I don't know. I don't know, but it seems like the good of the board.
Maybe you should be on the communications committee.
No, I resigned.
He was.
I thought it would go over well.
But Colby, don't go that far.
But again, it's, it's like, you know, you wonder why people don't wanna do this. It's, you say something and people hear it and why. And, you know, in case people don't realize, it does get back to us. And, you know, I don't think anybody in this town should make me resign from this unless I resign on my own for saying something that I feel like did wrong. But when I do say something, Scott, was that your office next morning? You know, we were calling in next morning. I said, listen, if I said something wrong, I'll resign right now. No problem. Phil, did I call you?
Yes.
Mr. Davis, did I call you to get your feedback? So before I draw my conclusions, I do reach out to analyze what I said. Sometimes I talk and I don't listen to myself. So that's a problem. I am done. Any more from the good of board people?
Oh, yeah, I think, I think you said it all. Said it all.
I just wanna, are we going into. I do wanna, I do wanna thank the board for representing education in the town with professionalism, with respect, with how you interact with each other and how you interact with guests when they come before us. I think you break a little whiles and I think that speaks volumes. I've heard that from other people and you don't usually hear that. But, but you represent what we hope to instill in our children and that's character integrity and treating each other with respect. So I wanna thank you. And stay tuned, I probably said something someone doesn't like next week. Visitors and pass, press.
Hi, Brandy.
Name, please.
Brandy Little, Alterm Pike Road. I just wanna clarify, have comment, clarify something else. So Mr. Schoolmaker, you're saying that the information that the town council needed at their meeting, you had given it to the town manager and he did not give it to the town council people at the right opportunity.
I'm, I'm only gonna answer that by saying that I was requested by a town council member on a Monday night to deliver that a week ago.
Yeah.
And I delivered it that next day in person and dropped it on the desk.
Okay.
That's all, I'm gonna answer that.
The budget book. Yes, right.
A week ago.
Okay. And my next comment is, I know I don't come to these meetings often and I don't go to any of the town council meetings, but you can be sure that I am watching them on TV. I want to say that I respect all of yous. I may not agree with, with some of the things you do, but I respect the way you hold yourself at these meetings. I am appalled and disgusted and I will let the town council know, 'cause I will go to the next one, on a comment that was made. It was disgusting and completely inappropriate and I, I'm not surprised you guys aren't asking for this particular councilman's resignation. This particular councilman is an embarrassment to this town and I am embarrassed by this comment. If anybody doesn't know what the comment is, I can tell you afterwards if you'd like because I'm not going to stoop to this one gentleman's level. So I just wanna thank you guys for being respectful and not being a disgrace to the town like this councilman is. I wish this councilman would turn in his recognition 'cause I don't see him being an asset to that position at all. And I have no reason, I have no clue why the town people put him back in this spot. And I think the mayor, Mr. Cantelore, which he left and I wish he was still here, I'm surprised nothing was said that night when the comment was made. I'm appalled at them and I respect you guys greatly and I'm sorry that you have to deal with that riffraff over there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I said what she said.
Well, I want you to stand up and say it though.
I said what she said and I was throwing stuff at the TV.
Who's supposed to put her tonight?
He's in Florida at the Daytona 500.
I think you videotaped everything. Any more business, press?
I'm just texting.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Elizabeth Kaplan, Old Post Road. And I just wanna thank you for your volunteerism. It's a lot of time, been there, done that. I love my time on the board. I also wanna thank the council members for their time. Any border commission position in this town takes a lot of sacrifice. I know you have a meeting coming up on March 15th with council and all I wanna say as a member of the public is that I hope it is made very public, whatever information that is brought forth from the board to the council and the council to the board about expectations, about real brass, tax, budget information. Because a lot of the time, the budget process isn't known to the public, isn't really understood by the public. And it's like good guy, bad guy kind of thing. And it's unfortunate because you do a lot of hard work. And obviously, the board of ed budget being the biggest budget in the town is, is a hard pill for people to swallow sometimes. And you shouldn't have to justify it, but to make it very clear to the public what, what it is, what are the needs, for real. And that the council members really understand what the needs are and the public understands that the council has the information and the decisions that are made is with thought, with process and that you've given them the information with process. And that's all I ask is to please do your best to keep the communication lines open.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per Section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statutes as permitted by Section 1-206A of the Connecticut General Statute to discuss agenda item 9, committee reports and negotiations. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Premier?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All the favor?
Aye.
Aye.